Welcome, everyone. Thanks for attending our virtual coffee talk. And today, what is October 28th? This is our virtual meeting, and so I'm looking out to the side so I can make sure I read this correctly. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting laws, GLC 30A Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limits on the number of people that may gather in one place due to the outbreak of the coronavirus 19. And as amended since the meeting of the town of Berlin Board of Secrime can be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public were omitted, but every effort we made to make sure that the public had adequately accessed the proceedings in real time via technology means. The town of Berlin will use its best efforts to post an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive records of procedure as soon as possible after the meeting at the town's website or the town's YouTube channel. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to attend the virtual meeting may attend via the Zoom webinar platform in one of two ways, both audio and video, or by telephone only. The links for both of those are, of course, on the town website. And if you're sort of watching this, you've probably figured out how to do one or both of those. And I can see from the attendees that some people are attending by phone and some by their computers. I believe today's meeting, so that's the formal notice, correct?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. That's good.
I think the main focus, oh, I can go back to agenda, can't I? The main focus of, so I just keep going down. And so we've called to order these, the meetings that the board and Board of Secrime are generally recorded for transmission, like I said earlier, access on our YouTube channel. And so your image and/or telephone number may be recorded. I'm supposed to read the next disclaimer, too. See, half of me will just do this.
I don't know, what's this?
Quorums of several town boards or committees may be present during this coffee talk to prepare and educate in advance in the fall special town meeting for 7:30 on Monday, November 8th, at the Berlin Memorial School, 34 South Street in Berlin, Massachusetts. And so there won't be sort of any debate, what's the formal term? That obviously there's not a, this is, there's not votes being taken and those various boards are not sort of deliberating. That's the word I was looking for.
Right, right.
But to make sure that everyone has the best knowledge available, several of them will be present.
And Margaret is here.
Margaret is here.
My apologies, I had to completely reboot.
Yeah.
Sound familiar, Margaret?
Yes, I had one of those for a 1 o'clock meeting that I was originally early for, anyway.
There's Peg. Peg's coming up, too.
Oh, good, nice. Should I read, is it important to read the dates that got us here, you know, where the warrant opened and closed? It opened on the 7th, it closed on the 27th. We have the coffee talk today. And the special time meeting is again Monday, November 8th.
Last opportunity to register to vote at the town clerk's office. For those who are not already registered voters in Berlin is tomorrow from 9:00 to 8:00 at the town clerk's office.
Thank you, Mary. And so that's, that's, that's the end of the prepared stuff I have over here.
Nice job.
It'll take a moment for you to pull up the warrant.
When anybody wants, I can share the warrant if you would like.
And Mary, would you just give folks the link to the warrant on the website? And so people can read their articles in their entirety. Some of them are kind of long.
If, if people go to townofberlin.com and then look at the very first item under news, which is in the middle of the screen, you can click on the link that says Coffee Talk with a select board. There's a picture of a coffee cup and leaves. And then when you roll down on that page, it says in blue capital letters, "Warrant online" here. Just click that and then you can read it at your own pace.
And with Peg online, I can happily turn the meeting back or over to her.
You were doing such a fabulous job, Scott. I'm okay. I will abdicate my power.
And it looks, it looks like we have a whole bunch of article sponsors and requesters here, which is great.
Absolutely.
And so I think we're just going to jump in then with Article 1, correct? We'll get to see how long my voice holds up, because it was a long day at work, too. So Article 1, I don't think I'm going to read the whole piece of it. But I'll get to the summary is that Article 1 is, the general intent of Article 1 is to sort of allow the splitting of the annual town meeting warrant from the annual, the town department reports and have it so that the town report, the town department reports could be made available to anyone who would like them and available at several parts of town offices or several places around the town, but not necessarily mailed. And, and one of my, I don't want to call it pet peeves, but I've always been bothered by sort of how late the warrants get to people's homes. And I think separating these allows us to do, allows us to focus on getting the warrant out in time and a reasonable amount of time. And with a warrant, we do the budgets. But it also, as it talks about, it cuts costs because printing 150-odd-page document and sending it to the ever-growing town does get, does start adding in costs.
Right. And this was one of them when we first started Coffee Talk many, many years ago. I think that this, this was one of the first items that had come up to, A, get it on time and B, to see if there was some way that we could split it. Either last year or the year before, I know there was an attempt to try and do this that started at the town meeting, but kind of got pulled. So happy to see that it is back up online since this is something that many of the residents requested.
And it doesn't require us to send them separately. Matter of fact, what it does is, as, as the circling mouse was pointing out, it removes the clause that forces them to be in the same document.
So I should add that, you know, the mail issues, oh, I'm sorry, the mail issues lately have just exacerbated this. And I know that some people, even though these warrants, the current warrants were sent out more than two weeks in advance. I know some people still haven't received them. So that's why Mary, Mary suggested earlier for people to check our website. You can go on news and you can scroll right through the warrant there.
It's on Facebook, it's on the calendar. So if you don't know what link to look at and you're just looking at the website, just look at November 8th, which is the town meeting, and you can click there and get in and see the warrant.
And I'm, so if people have sort of questions they want to ask or comments, they can, they can raise their hand to be recognized. And I'm not, those. And so I don't know how to raise, you know, what are the instructions?
Star 6, I believe, star 6 to raise your hand from an iPhone.
Yeah.
Or a smartphone. And then on your PC, if you just go to the bottom bar, you'll see the raise hand icon and you just click that.
I'm waving. I'm just waving, yeah. Six is your microphone on and off. So star 6 turns, if you just have a regular phone and there's two callers who have just phones, star 6 opens your microphone to be heard.
No, what, how do you raise your hand, Mary?
First, you would need to tell us that you want to be heard as a phone caller. So you'd press star 9. And then we, you're raising your hand.
I was mixed up between the stars. My head's in the stars. I don't know.
Are we okay to move to?
Yeah, there's no hands.
Article 2? Article 2 is another sort of housekeeping one for the bylaws. It is adding Juneteenth to the formal list of holidays. Officially, as a town, we follow the state holidays. The state has already added Juneteenth to theirs, and so we're adding that to ours. And we're fixing a small topographical mistake in which we don't celebrate Martha Luther King Day. We actually celebrate Martha King Jr. Day. Although we've always done that appropriately, it just fixes that typo since we're in that section anyway. This is another one of the, this was sponsored by the Select Board, correct?
Select Board Town Administrator and Personnel Committee.
Yeah.
And we do have members of the Personnel Committee here tonight. At least one.
Article 3, we start getting to the ones that I don't feel as qualified to talk about. Margaret, are you able to do a quick summary? Because that's another one that is fairly long, but the impact is relatively, is supposed to be fairly straightforward.
Yes. So this would be the third modification of the River Bridge Development Agreement. All this article does is extend deadlines for established obligations under the development agreement and existing modifications. So in this article, just to kind of, well, the summary actually tells it all. We had a number of deadlines that would be coming up on December 11th of this year. Construction of bridge deck widening, pedestrian bridge, sidewalk connections. And the town also had a deadline here to exercise an option to purchase the River Run parcel. None of these things can be accomplished by December 11th of this year. So we have worked with River Bridge to come up with reasonable dates where the obligations would still be met, but in a more reasonable timeline. So I hope that explains it nicely.
So any questions that's, you know, I can see probably that would be one for up for discussion. Any questions from folks in the audience?
I can tell you that we, I'm sorry, someone's got your hand up.
Carolyn.
Peg, like you, I can't stay silent for long. Um, I, so I guess my biggest question, I totally understand about extending the date is, is there a reason that we're holding off exercising the purchase of that property for a dollar?
Yes. While it had, there, there is potential for the property to be re-divided in such a way that the town might be able, could potentially be able to avail itself of more of the land and land that would have more flexibility for uses. And I can't elaborate more on that. But if we were to exercise the right to purchase now, we're under established restrictions. If we wait a while, there is a possibility that we might be able to discuss expanded uses on that parcel.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Article 4 is another Select Board one. The intent is, is to authorize the Board, the Select Board, to be able to petition the state legislature to add two more additional off-present alcohol licenses. The other parts, I think, are more, but that's the two alcohol licenses. We've currently both given out all the alcohol licenses. This is off-preference, right? Alcohol licenses.
That's right.
We've given, we've given them all out. We currently have zero applications for it and zero known planned applications for it. But one of the things we're trying to avoid is if it's, if it's a limited quantity, that means the people who currently hold them might be able to sell them for substantial monies. We have seen that in the past, and having some available also allows us to be more nimble. If a business did come in and, and we've, we as a town felt it was appropriate that they have an alcohol license. If we have one already available, the turnaround time can be much shorter and thus make us sort of a little bit more business-friendly in some of our, our business districts. And?
Well, Carolyn. She's back.
All right. Hi. So my question here, so off-premise liquor license means like a liquor, liquor store, correct?
Right.
So how does that affect the number of marijuana retail establishments? Because I know it's a, it's directly linked to the number of liquor licenses that we have.
It is. Would you like me to take that? It is, but our, our bylaw that was passed in the spring at the annual town meeting specifies the number of liquor licenses, I'm sorry, marijuana retail licenses. So that number is not going to fluctuate based on what was voted at the annual town meeting.
And that was three?
Three.
It was, was it three or was it four?
I can.
Okay, because I know it wa, it wound up being.
It needed to round up or something.
It needed to, we, I think originally Planning Board had rounded down and they needed to, they realized they needed to round up.
Yes, it was two and it had to be rounded up to three, I believe. Let me just, yeah, let me just.
And I believe that adding these two liquor licenses, because we had to round up to three, does not push us over.
Does it? Okay. Then that I would probably, I would say probably makes sense. All right.
Carolyn, I'm confirming that now, just so we.
That is a good question.
The warrant article itself read two, and the motion raised it to three based on the requirements.
Based on the, because that's based on state law, correct?
That it has. Normally would be if we didn't further regulate it, but we further regulated it here to read no more than three retail marijuana establishments shall be permitted at any given time.
I see. Excellent. Yeah, yes.
Thanks for the questions, Carolyn. Appreciate that.
Oh, oh, I'll be here all night.
Try the veal, try the veal.
Tippy waitress.
Okay.
Article 5 is related to the Cemetery Commission. Is there someone from the Cemetery Commission who, present to speak? Let's see.
No.
No. I.
Margaret, if you could talk more about it, because there's some details that I'm not the closest to.
Sure. So the Cemetery Commission learned that in order to, in order to establish their regulations, it does require a vote of the town to approve those regulations. So the Cemetery Commission has filed a copy of the regulations with the town clerk, as specified here in the, in the warrant. And the regulations will be subject to town meetings approval here. The Cemetery Commission was invited tonight, so I, now hopefully we've, hopefully we've represented the article.
And if I remember correctly, the, the rules they have at the cemetery, they didn't change the rules. The rules they've sort of had all along, we just discovered we need to take this extra step to make them really enforceable.
This, this section is needed to memorialize them.
Yeah, yes. Okay. Article 6 is the, the closing out of some special articles and putting their monies sort of back to where they, they came from. There's three that are sort of done or ready to be closed out. And so we're just taking the, this opportunity to do that. It returns about almost $32,000, $33,000 to free cash. Article 7 is the, is the capital budget request. These are three, four, five capital items, some of which we've seen before, some of which are sort of designed to be timely. They, some might be able to wait until town meeting in May. But dealing with some of them now sort of helps, helps some of the timing of those projects. And sorry, that's my clock, so I'm not going to be able to mute as I'm talking here, but.
Anna, Anna Crean's in the office, in the audience.
Good.
So I don't know if you want to bump up.
Yes.
He's probably sitting there going, thanks, Peg. Appreciate, appreciate you.
When, when we shared the screen, I suddenly lose seeing who's in the audience, so.
Here she comes. Anna, you're on mute if you can hear us.
Wait a moment.
I'm back.
There she is.
Wait, I'm totally in the dark, literally. I'm trying to get into the office, but I can't get the key in. There we go.
Anna, you are a true trooper. There you are.
Joyous of mobile meetings, right?
Yes, yes. And always catches you at the worst timing.
Yes, of course, of course. I loved when Peg said, oh, I bet Anna is, is saying, thank you, Perry.
Was I close?
You were close. I was like, Peg, give me three more seconds to get me off.
Okay, you're, you're here now. That's all we need. You're, you're with us.
Um, so I'm here, but I have no, thank you, Mary, for giving me the, um, the warrant. So item number one is the rooftop air handler unit. We had received a written estimate, I don't remember when, that we had approved for replacing the air handler unit. We approved it at the May meeting. It was a $60,000 estimate. Unfortunately, the current estimate is $100,000. So we are asking for an additional $40,000 to be able to replace that town office rooftop air handling unit. Concerns, no? Item number two is the old fire station. The roof, according to Margaret, has really large holes in it. We are looking to patch and, and or repair it just enough so that it can hold together while we continue our building inventory and analysis to determine what the best course of action is for lots of the old buildings in town. Um, and then item number three is the ambulance replacement. This is ambulance number one, I believe. Um, yep, so it's ambulance number one for $315,000. This is all coming out of ambulance receipts. So the ambulance is paying for itself to get a new ambulance, which sounds good to me. Item, item number four is Highway Hot Top, which is typically $80,000 that we approve every year. Um, we did approve in the May meeting the $80,000 for this year. Um, and unfortunately, this is the amount for last year, for 2019 into 2020. And our, we, our sunset clause expired. And I'm not quite sure I understand what happened there, but apparently we didn't take our funds in 20, in 2020, but from 2019. And then finally, the Recreation Committee is looking to upgrade the basketball and tennis courts over by the school. And they have gone to community preservation for the, I'm going to say for the majority of their funding or for a significant chunk of their funding. But they have come to us for $50,000 worth of funding for those court upgrades. And $30,000 of that would come from the Highland Commons mitigation funds and then an additional $20,000 from free cash.
And can I just add, I believe, did they not turn back $30,000 from the walking trail? And that is where the Highland Commons money is coming from.
I believe that's correct.
I will just add to, to what Anna said on the hot top. In the, at the 2019, the spring town meeting of 2019, town meeting, this was the last time town meeting had voted a sunset clause on hot top. And the intent with this hot top funding is to supplement Chapter 90 funds. So when a sunset clause is put on, there's obviously a deadline to spend these funds. There was a deadline of June of 2021 to spend these funds. So as of that date, they had to revert back to the general fund. This just puts the funds back into the hot top supplemental funding for Chapter 90.
I see Julie's been brought up to the front. Julie, anything that you want to add on the rec court upgrades? Or we'll wait until you come up for CPA money? Because you know I'm going to challenge you to pickleball once those courts get up.
Sounds great, sounds great.
I mean, I think everyone knows those courts are horrendous. And I know that Rec had reached out to me about seeing if there was any way to patch some of the line cracks, but it was more detailed. You know, it just wasn't as simple as throw some tar in the, in the crack. It was dig it up, fix it, fill it, flatten it, go back. So it really wasn't time efficient or effective, you know, to fill the cracks. I drove by the other day, there's some pretty tall grass growing down there at the, on the courts. Yep, I think that's the new spot for the community garden next year will be the the tennis courts. I need to make sure that Carl's not in the office, in the audience, so he doesn't yell at me. But yeah, so definitely, that needs some help. Okay.
Any other, any questions about, about those capital items?
Yeah, I think we're ready to move.
Great. Articles sort of 8 through 12 are with the CPA, the Community Preservation Act. And so we have been, as a town, putting money into that for a couple of years now. And not only have we been putting money into it, but because the town adopted the CPA, one of the reasons we did is we've gotten some nice state matching to the money. So the money that we've put in as a town has been matched. And, and, and there's now a process together and we're going to, this will be our first opportunity to spend some of that money on some, some community projects.
And is, is Tim here to speak to it?
I'm here, yes, thank you. Just, I was going to introduce the, the general concept of CPA real quickly and then, then allow the different proponents to speak to their individual requests. So, I mean, as we all recall, 2018, the town voted to approve the CPA, which in our case meant that there was a 3% fee attached to local property taxes. In 2020, we generated some money that was not matched by the state at that time because we didn't have a CPA committee. In 2021 fiscal year, we generated further funds. And because we had a committee, the state had a 68% match to the funds that we raised. And in 2022, the year we're in now, we're generating funds. Those will begin to roll in as taxes are collected in the next month and then again later in the year. The, the committee in general believes that we ought to be spending money that we've already received. And so we felt comfortable with expending money from 2020 and 2021. And we've, we've agreed to use a small amount of the money from fiscal 2022. The money that gets raised ends up being put into three specific categories on an annual basis. 10% of the money has to go toward historic preservation. 10% has to go to open space and recreation and 10% has to go to housing. The money, the 10% of the funds generated each year that goes into those three accounts stays in those accounts permanently until it's expended for one of those purposes. The additional funds can be put into either a fund balance or a reserve account. And the reserve account allows us access. And any money that isn't utilized from the reserve account goes at the end of the year back into the fund balance. So over time, of course, you could accumulate some significant monies if you're not expending them on an annual basis. The, the town has a couple of different options. When you go to town meeting, what happens is proposals are presented to the Community Preservation Act Committee. The committee then makes a recommendation to town meeting. No article or use of the funds can be made unless the committee recommends it to the town meeting. The town meeting then has a choice to accept that recommendation of the committee. It can reject it outright. It can reduce the amount. It can reduce the amount that's recommended by the committee. Or it can reserve the amount recommended by the committee to the applicable account. So if we, if the town meeting decided it didn't want to put the money into the conservation use that's proposed, it could put that money into their account. And so this year, we have five different articles. One, that's proposing to utilize money for the expenditure purchase of land. Two, that relate to historic preservation. And two that relate to recreation. And that's in general, all I think I need to say. I think the individuals that are going to promote these different warrant articles can speak to them more clearly than I can. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. All right, so first up is conservation. So, oh Carolyn, you're back.
I am. Oh, here, look, I'll even
Show us.
I'll even start my video, yes.
There she is, her usual spot in the
Also is Krista Collins in the audience. So she is been, she's from Sudbury Valley Trustees, and she's been working on this with us. And may be able to speak a little bit more intelligently about their role in this land purchase. So, most people think that we already own the corner, the piece of land that abuts the Mount Pisgah Recreation Area that makes up the corner of Linden and Lyman's, Linden Street and Lyman Street. It says Lyman Road in
It is Lyman Road, it is Lyman Road.
Oh, okay. Yeah. But we don't, we don't own it. We don't own Horseshoe Pond. We don't own the area where we park on Linden Street. That is all private property. And it is currently designated chapter land for recreational use, which is why we have access to it. We've been working for years to negotiate a purchase price with the property owners. And we finally have succeeded. This money that we are asking for is a little bit less than half of what we're going to end up ultimately needing. But, you know, as Tim said, we have kind of all committed to spending money that we already, that we have, not future funds, so that is why we are asking for the amount of $490,000 at the Spring Town Meeting. The state distribution is next week, is the week after town meeting. So after town meeting, we will have a better idea of how much we're getting in matching funds from the state for next year. So Krista, maybe if you want to just talk about how Sudbury Valley Trustees is helping us. Part of the problem that we've been dealing with is that in order for conservation to buy land, we have to have, there, there's a whole bunch of hoops that we have to jump through, such as approval at town meeting. And the property owners were not super excited about having a bunch of contingencies. They, a couple of years ago, told us, figure out how to get us our money. And then, when you have a check, come see me. And so we've been working on how to make that happen. And we also need to, we, we need to not own the land outright before applying for any grants. Correct, Krista?
Correct.
Yeah, so SVT is going to step in as an intermediary, which will allow us to apply for, there's two different grant opportunities that we're going to apply for, and hopefully get at least one of them. So, yeah.
So, yes, that was all wonderful. Thank you, Carolyn. And so, yeah, as Carolyn said, we previously kind of tried to negotiate some more complicated offers with the landowners. And so this time, the, the offer that, that I made, which they accepted in, in principle, was to purchase the property for 1.25 million and to secure it with a nine-month option. So that would, that would mean SVT would have control of the, or would not have control, but, you know, they wouldn't be able to enter into any other agreements for the next nine months from, from signing an agreement with us. And that would allow us to kind of wait to make sure that the town, town meeting supported the purchase, and that we could allow the town to apply for grants. But, but because the grant cycle is even longer than nine months, you know, once, once we were sure that, that there was sort of a clear path to success, we would step in, buy it, hold it, wait for the grant cycles to play out, and then the town could ultimately repurchase it from us. So, so the offer that we made to the landowners was pretty straightforward. It was their asking price of 1.25 million, it's slightly over appraised value, about, I want to say like $56,000 over appraised value. But nine months, months from now, that, that gap may have closed, or at least narrowed. And SVT would be able to fundraise to make up the difference in any case, so. So they are considering the offer, they've confirmed that they received it from me, but I have not gotten any feedback from them. It was, it was pretty minimal in terms of the terms. I think the only thing that might be controversial is the Phase 1 environmental assessment, which is pretty standard for us. We like to know that a property doesn't have any contamination before we buy it. But some landowners balk at that, so we'll have to see what they say about that, that, that may be a negotiable point. But otherwise, you know, the, we were offering their asking price, and really the only other contingency is, is for a clear title, which is standard too. So, so hopefully, there won't be any sticking points. And that we'll hear back from them soon, because special town meeting is around the corner.
So Carolyn, I have questions, and you know, you know anything about me, I do very simple math. June won't let me be a town accountant, because I balance my checkbook within $10 either way. So if, just trying to do math here. So if the asking price is 1.25, and if the town approves the CPA allotment of 490, that leaves a balance of $760,000. Where is that money coming from?
So, there will be a request for more money at the Spring Town Meeting. But I don't know exactly how much that's going to be. That will be, you know, dependent on what funds are available from CPA. And then whatever the gap is, as Krista said, Sudbury Valley Trustees is willing to do some fundraising. Conservation does have some money. We have about 250,000. So basically, we're just going to do what we need to do to cobble it all together. Maybe we'll have a bake sale.
Car wash.
Yeah.
$100 for a car wash.
Our board is so enthusiastic about this, we've already applied for a $75,000 grant. And so, yeah, so we would be in, in plan for a fundraising campaign in the spring. The, the ultimate exit strategy, we had to go that route, would be to sell off a lot or two, probably on Lyman Street, yeah. And obviously, it'd be preferable not to do that, but that would be kind of, you know, if
Right, right.
Spring Town Meeting didn't want to support any more spending.
Oh, I thought there was lots sold, no?
There were some lots on the Oberg property that sold?
No, no, the, the one definitely on, on Lyman. I thought there were two lots that were sold, where whoever bought it was going to put up like one house pushed way back off the road. Did that fall through?
It, it was not, I mean, that was one of the kind of possibilities that we had presented the landowners with. And they just didn't want to get into paying Pete, you know, getting money from Peter, and getting money from Paul, and getting money from Mary. They just wanted, they wanted one clean deal. So none of the land has been sold, none of it's been divided. But as Krista said, I mean, that, we could probably raise almost, I mean, we could, we could certainly raise whatever gap there is with one or two lots.
Yeah, because if you, I mean, if you toss in your 250 Carolyn, and then Krista, your 75, that still leaves like 435. This is why God invented calculators. You know, about 435 for a balance of that. I was just wondering where, where that balance was going to come from. And if we don't have all the money, are the folks who own the Lower Property, or the old McGrail Property, for all us old people in town, do we still have to come up with that money? Are they willing to wait? Do we have it all?
That's where the buy and hold comes in, because I think at that point, SVT would sort of say, well, we're willing to, if, if the gap was, was 400,000, and you know, that could be covered if, if necessary by two lot sales, then we would go ahead and buy the property. And then the, then the family would be out of it, they wouldn't have to worry about it. And it would just then be a matter of kind of trying to come up with the, the balance of funds, either through grants, or, or through a future town meeting appropriation.
And then would we need to buy those couple lots back from you, Krista? Or is it just like one big happy family of, Berlin owns this, you own this, together we own this?
Yeah, yeah, we would, the, the two lots, we would sell to residential, for residential development. So, so that would be kind of taken out, and then the town would, would purchase the rest.
Right, so, I mean, they're, yeah, they're all doable numbers. It's just a matter of, you know, and if we get a grant, it's some, correct me if I am remembering this wrong, Krista. The MVP grants can match up to 60% of the purchase price. And it is considered important to climate change, which is what the MVP grants are all about, is climate resiliency for towns. So, you know, I mean, if we can get a 60% grant, we're not even going to need to get money in the spring. So, you know, it's the biggest thing that I believe we're all looking for with this request is commitment. That the town supports the purchase of the property. And that we're all committed to making this happen.
But you can't apply for any MVP grant until we have the land, correct?
Until
No, the town, the town could, could apply in the, the grant rounds, I think last year they opened in March. So, you know, if, if we have it under agreement, then the town could apply for the, the land or MVP grant. And/or
Right, well, the, the current plan is to apply for both. And the MVP grants get awarded before the land grant. So if we get the MVP grant, then we'll pull the land grant. If we don't get it, we'll still have the backup application.
Does any of that money go towards the upkeep of the trails? Or is that just something totally different? You know, because obviously, I mean, let's, let's pretend and say that we bought it. You know, obviously, those big giant boulders, you know, that are sitting on Linden to supposedly stop people from going in, you just cut around it. You know, you'd need money to move those, probably clean up the trails a little bit with all the branches and things like that for folks to, to walk in. So just wondering how that will be taken care of.
And they say about the, yeah, the MVP grant, you can actually add in more things like that than you can in the land grant applications. Could even, you can even do like habitat restoration, or all kinds of things.
Thanks, Krista.
Sure, sorry, my lighting's so bad.
Not as bad as Anna's was. I do also would like to, for people who are listening and being like, ah, first time CPA money's being, being given out, and conservation's trying to take most of it. I, I, it's the timing, you know, like I said, we've been working with, working with the homeowner, or trying to work with the homeowners on this purchase for several, five years, maybe more. We had a handshake agreement a year and a half ago. And then COVID hit, and the world exploded. And, you know, so it's, it's truly the timing of it. This, this purchase and one other large conservation restriction are really the two biggest things that we have on our radar. I promise you, conservation won't be trying to snag all the money every time. It, it's just kind of how it's worked out this time, you know, this time around. But I would like, I, I know that that's out there, and I would like to just let everybody know that this is not going to become a regular thing. But we'll be back in the spring.
Well, those are my questions.
Anybody else have any questions for us?
Is a hand up, Julie?
Are you unmuted? I, I've been listening, and I drive by the property all the time. So I'm glad you're trying to figure out a way to get to work. My, my question is, what happens? I, I guess I like to always know what the other side, what, what the bad side is. So what happens if you can't get through in the November meeting? Do you just have to wait until, can you wait until the spring? For getting the, or do you have another plan to to get this to go forward?
We, we could wait until spring. If we, if we sign a nine-month option, it would take us through the end of July. But I might get an ulcer. It would just be much better peace of mind to know, to have this, this special town meeting vote. And, and, and then I think the rest is, is easier to figure out.
Right, like I, like I said, this, if, if this gets approved, it shows the commitment. I mean, we're asking Sudbury Valley Trustees to put out a lot of money on our behalf. And if this doesn't pass, there's no commitment from the town that they're going to get that money back. So I, you know, it's a, it's a vote of good faith on our part towards them that we are worthy of their putting this money out on our behalf.
Carolyn, could you say that again? I missed it.
Which part?
The, the not getting our money back part.
Did I say, what did I, I said?
No, SVT wouldn't get our money back.
Exactly, because they, you know, they're, they're, we're basically putting, they're putting a lot of money out on our behalf, and this shows that we're committed to paying them back.
News and fame, Krista, to pay you back? Let's say you put the, let's say, again, making it up, money's a Money's approved, there's other funding, you have to buy the two plots of land or however many plots of land to be sold for somebody to pop up some houses. What happens if they don't sell? Where is Berlin on the hook? To kind of pay you for the money that you guys put out to help get over the hurdle to get to the 1.25 million?
Well, I think that's, that's a risk that our, our board would be taking on. If, you know, they're, I don't think we'd be looking for the town to make an obligation to to, to cover those, you know, those, yeah, that difference if, once we, once we closed. I think we're, you know, there's so much frontage. You know, ideally, we would want to tuck the lots as far, you know, as close to the periphery as possible. But if, you know, if they didn't perk and we had to move them a little bit more to the corner. I'd hate to do that, but if, you know, that would, that would be the ultimate exit strategy.
Well, and as, as I understand it, and, and what I fear is the reverse of this is that if a town meeting this failed, it would show the town is not interested in those properties, which would in my mind mean that Sudbury might not be willing to risk as much as they're thinking of risking. And those 60 acres could go to any developer and become another sort of ABC house development in this town. And we've already seen times where we have passed on prime properties that has a lot of town value to it to just let them suddenly become housing for others. And I get that housing's important, but this land is currently being used by the town on a regular basis for one of, I think, one of our great parks in town. And so showing the, a, a good faith at town meeting or getting the temperature of us at town meeting and putting a third of it down, I, I mean, I, I would advocate the best I could that this, this is one of those things that we really need to have past the town meeting. We need to continue on to support the growth of that, that conservation area.
Can I get you to repeat that in a couple of weeks?
I'll be at the meeting, so I might.
That would be great. But I agree, most, almost everybody that when they hear that we're looking to buy that property say, oh, we don't already own that? It's just such an important part of that whole area.
And I think the backup fundraising plan is if we don't raise enough money, we might have to sell a house lot or two. Makes a lot of sense. We'd rather it all be put into conservation, but if, you know, two decent sized house lots have to be sold to, to me or just one, because you wouldn't automatically go from zero to two, you try one. That doesn't get you all the money, you do two, but I, I think that sounds like a decent backup plan. I, I, I like the proposals you put together.
Thank you. We've, we've worked awfully hard on this.
Other questions on, on this purchase?
I just, I, I just want to note for anyone inquiring as to the tax revenue that's coming off of the book, that would come off the books with this sale for open space. The FY annual, FY 22, current year annual taxes on the land itself right now is $4,566.45. So it's not a significant amount of tax revenue that's coming.
Thank you, Margaret.
Not seeing any more hands. I think we can, thank you very much, Christopher, joining us.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you guys.
If we move on to Article nine to, to start to discuss, I think that's historical. And I thought I saw Elaine and June and Barry all in the audience.
Yeah, so bring them all up.
That would steal all their thunder, I think. So I, I don't want to let them present.
And, and now that Barry's here, he might want an opportunity to speak to the cemetery commission article at some point too.
Can you bring up June Miller too, please? Is Elaine? Yes, June, like where'd she go?
We're going to make a point of like promoting people to panelists as they move from one room to another.
You get disconnected. Chris thinks I bail on meetings. Yep, not a problem.
That said, my unstable internet connection happened while, while other people were talking. And so having not said anything, most people might not have even noticed.
All right, June, you're still on mute. Here she goes.
And Barry's still muted too.
So June, I don't know, as the Chair of Historical, if you want to give the summary of Article nine and the $100,000 for the community preservation from CPA for the Bullard House.
I'd like Elaine to speak to that because that's been her, been her main responsibility.
Um, you want me to read it?
Or just summarize it?
Okay, well, $1,000 is a recommendation that we've had. We had a structural integrity survey done on the house. And there were several things that are going and one, one project will start very soon regarding skills. We did, we've already done a weatherization project. And the next thing is for the foundation. And I can read from my, my application to the CPA that in December of 2020, there was a building survey of the Bullard House. It was completed by a well-respected professional timber frame house restoreer. And to quote from the report, the foundation of the Bullard House was not particularly well constructed to begin with and has suffered over time. And there are stones falling out in some places, very patchy mortar above grade and more than ample evidence of a steady flow of water through the cellar. The moisture level has, has and will continue to add to the deterioration of the building in general and the floor structure specifically. In its present condition, dehumidifying or other small scale remedies will prove to be insufficient and to mitigate the problem. And structural improvement is definitely possible. And because of inaccessibility to the inside of the, the building of the foundation, repair, this restoration, repair and waterproofing of the inside of the foundation is impractical. And you can't jack the house to poor hitting the foundation. It's also very impractical because of the ledge on the left. And, you know, you couldn't get the steel supports under it to, to do it properly. So it will have to be trainers will have to be put in and all of the waterproofing will have to be done. And repairing and the restoration will have to be done from the exterior. So we had a quote initially for it was $95,000 and we put another $5,000 in because the quote is a year old. And we also want to have outside access. Right now, it's, the stairway is gone from the inside. It was not a safe way to get in and out of the cellar to begin with. I don't know how we got workmen to do what they did over the years. And really, it's just a practical way to, you know, tackle the problem. And the house needs to be made structurally sound from the bottom up. And that's all part of the plan.
So it's 200,000 total Elaine, but 100 potentially coming from CPA and another chunk from historic and a smaller chunk from?
No, it's 100 and a, just 100,000.
Okay, yes, but the total, the total.
Oh, yes, 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 yeah, from the historical, yeah, yeah.
I, I think, sorry, I, I may, may, because I thought the total project was 100,000. And there was a proportion is coming from the money, the CPA money reserve for historic resources and a portion coming from the undesigned pool. So the total project is only 100,000. The two numbers is how that, what, what pools of money that 100,000, 100,000 is coming.
All within CPA, yeah.
Any questions from anybody in the audience on this? Not seeing, no, not seeing anybody. Oh, Margaret does.
Margaret, I've been quiet for too long now. I just want to note that several other items at the, at the Bullard House have been addressed through funds that were appropriated a few years ago. So the Historical Commission has methodically gone through those funds to make key smaller upgrades to the Bullard House and they're continuing to do that. So they are, they are making good progress.
And the projects have been sort of in the order of the, the structural survey that Elaine talked about that was done that pointed out what needs to be done to make that building sort of both usable and structurally sound for the long term use of the town. And so.
He listed the priorities and we're trying to follow that as best we can.
Shall we move to 10? Not seeing.
I would, I would add that the Historical Society over the years has put about $100,000 in the rest too. Let's keep in mind that, you know, a lot of other stuff has been done and that will continue to serve as well.
I mean, I think some of the roof work that has dark done has had the building, so it's actually still sav- salvageable. I mean, that roof, and they did the structural survey, talked about how good that roof was put on. So that stopped a lot of potential damage to it. Yes, you guys are doing great.
Yeah, the, the roof work and, and a furnace, a heating furnace and, and a variety, and, and a whole new chimney. I mean, those are some of the other, some of the other things that have been done that are major infrastructure things. And, and this is where we are now as to what we think we need next.
All right. So number 10, Elaine, is this still you?
Yeah.
No, no, that's June.
All right, all right, June, back to you.
Okay. Article 10 has two parts. One is to digitize the, the early inventories that we have from the 60s and 70s. They're fragile, they're handwritten on both sides and need professional imaging. This can be done by a company that I worked with before called EverPresent in Needham. I think, is it Needham or Newton? One or the other. And their estimate for the number of pages we have was about $500. So that's how I arrived at that. The second part is to choose high priority artifacts that we have in the collection and reference those to the inventory with digital images. And all of this is to make the collection accessible to people who want to research and to our community. Our, our own people here in Berlin. And they'll, these, the digitization will make programming a lot easier. We have to think about the artifact as precious. We, when we, if we were to lose any or if they were to deteriorate, we would at least have the information, the digital information. If not the, the artifact itself, which is of course more powerful. So that's, that's really it. The photographing is very expensive. It's about $1,000 a day for commercial work. And I estimated that we, we could have at least a minimum of 50 artifacts, high priority artifacts photographed. And hopefully a lot more. Depending on the, the flow of, of that work. We need like, you know, obviously we need the commissioners to help Barry especially. And someone to do the setup work for the photographer. It's a stand, you know, the digitization is a standard and in historic preservation. And it's desirable because it makes, it makes what we have available to people.
What you said about setup is very important because if we can, if we can get a setup provided and set up with a, with, with the professional photographer and we have our material lined up ahead of time, so we can swiftly move from item to item. You get a lot more usefulness out of the time that you spend with them and more bang for the buck. And that's why we're hopeful we can do quite a few more things than, than the.
Won't see any questions. I think we're good. So Elaine, June, Barry, thank you very much for coming.
Guys have been quite active in getting some good stuff put together.
It's Julie Malik again. I just want to say, I'm really glad you want to get that project done with the digitizing. Because I know how fragile things get and to be able to like look online and look this stuff up would be amazing. So thank you.
Thanks Julie.
Thanks Julie.
All right. So this next one I think is Julie Lee. So if we want to bring her back to the front. Oh, wait a minute, before we go, Margaret, do we need to talk to Barry on anything about the cemetery commission clear up? Anything while he's still up in the front?
If Barry would like to speak to the cemetery commission article, he just wasn't here yet when, when you, when that one came up. Oh, Barry, you're on mute.
I have the regs here, which I'd like to try to share screen and see if it'll come up. Yeah. There we are. Can you see that?
Not yet. Yep. Right, well Barry, if you could just speak to them because it's, you know, instead of everyone having to try and read and try to keep them brief so that we can have a lot of time for everybody else.
All right, this is this, the regulations that we established 11 years ago with a few, two or three amendments that we've done over the years. And this is, much of it is about sizes of monuments and how we do sale of lots and, and all that kind of thing. So this is about plantings in the cemetery and so on. I don't think there's much in it that's, that's revolutionary. One of the things that's perhaps interested is cremated remains. We can put four in a grave. And we can put four in a grave after we've used the grave too. I mean, if, if you have a full burial, you can still plant, put in cremated ones, cremations above it. But there's a variety of different specific things. And this, these, this, these regulations are in the hands of the town clerk. You can go there to see them. And we also will provide copies of this to all the people at town meeting. In order to save space and everything else, we just elected to put it this way. Somebody has a question about it, otherwise I'd be happy to take.
Not seeing any.
But this is because we found that the, that state law requires it to be approved by the town. So. So we've had these for, and lived with them for quite a while, but we didn't, we'd forgotten, uh, didn't realize that we had to get it approved by the town and that's why it's going to town. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Barry. Appreciate it. All right. Scooting back down, scooting, scooting. All right, Ms. Lee, you're up. Mary, can we promote Julie Lee, please? Or maybe she's on her way.
Oh, great. Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Oh, great. Hi, everyone. How are y'all doing?
I was gonna say, Ju- promoting Julie was a lot slower than Julie moves.
Julie, how do you have this much energy at like 10 of eight? I've got like my cup of tea, my flannel pants on. Ready for bed and you're.
Let me tell you, I am too. I am too. Okay. I'm definitely ready for bed too. Um, all right. Well, thanks so much. Um, so this is kind of a, I feel like this is a no brainer. If anyone's seen the conditions of the basketball and tennis courts, Peg, like you were saying earlier, there's literally, there's grass growing through, yeah, I mean, several of the cracks. I mean, we're talking like five, six inch cracks that run, you know, the width and the length and there's mounds. There's been some patching that's tried to, people have tried to do over the years, which was a Band-Aid fix and a good Band-Aid fix because there was no funding. But now that CPA funding is available, I think it's a, um, it's a great project for the community to get those totally redone, including the, um, the fence, that ugly fence needs to come down to. So we're looking for, um, a hundred from CPA and then 30 from the mitigation, which was the original wellness that got turned back. Um, and then we had asked for it to come back to rec to use for this project and then 20 from free cash. And that's the plan. Hopefully we get, we get everyone approves.
Well, and Julie too. I mean, um, when the board had sent out a message a while ago to the folks in the town, when we started to do our goals and objectives, you know, to ask what you wanted to work on, there were quite a few people that came back and said, fix the courts, you know? Give an opportunity to either kids in town to, you know, I'll put myself, you know, the older category, you know, to go down and use them. So, you know, just want to remind folks out there that, um, you know, there, that that's where kind of this came from was folks saying you need to do something.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. And I like too that we're also adding on top of those tennis courts. We're going to add pickleball courts. Um, which I know Peg, you've talked about for a while, but there was.
You all laughed at me when I brought up pickleball like four years ago. You're like, what is she smoking? And now you drive through Westbro, Marlboro, they're everywhere. They're even on TV. They're on ESPN. So, yeah.
Yep, it's wildly popular and it's, what's great about that sport too is it speaks to an older generation of people that still want to be active, but they can't take that high intensity. Pickleball is not high intensity. So it's a really great thing for that population too. So this is what's great about, does it, you know, meet CPA goals? It sure does because it, it gets all different ages, right? So that's it.
Barry Edgar, I'd like to, um, I'd like to say, as a neighbor of the, of the courts, the tennis courts used to receive tremendous use. And these days they're much, they're very little used. And I, I have little doubt, but the difference is their condition. And I, I, we had a period of time that I, I just was stunned by the number of people that we saw out there and how much they were occupied and used. And, and it's been very disappointing to see that all fall off. And I think that this project could put that back in place.
I think it will.
Great. This is great.
Julie, do you want to keep going? Cause it looks like the next one's yours as well.
It is? Oh, you know why? Wow, what did I do? No, I think that's because, um, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, Margaret, but because they couldn't be on the same line. Is that right?
Oh, the next article is actually the baseball, the backstop, the, oh, not the backstop, the scoreboard. Yeah.
Okay, that, okay. So that's actually baseball. That's not specifically rec. I actually can get Rick to speak to that or I can talk about it too. I mean, I can previously do it. So they're looking to put behind, I don't know if you guys are going to know the area that I'm talking about or anyone that's listening. So there's currently two baseball fields down there. One of them is a major league baseball field, which is toward the back where the salt shed is. Um, and they want to put behind the home plate, uh, an announcer's booth. Which sort of, when you think about it, you're like, why do they need an announcer's booth? But what's appealing is when you have an announcer's booth and a scoreboard, I think those are tied in together. You, we can get playoffs to happen there. You know, there's so many games that happen a year for the baseball program. And our town is not a sought after town to play on, not because of the condition of the fields necessarily, but because we don't have those things like the scoreboard. I mean, the, the announcement booth is just an added bonus. So the program is trying to build and it's getting larger despite the fact that it's almost like a dying sport. But the, in order to get playoffs to happen there and to have more games there, we need those, we need those things. So the baseball program had come to rack and I said, you know, this is a great opportunity, I think, to use CPA funds. Um, because it does provide recreational activities. So hopefully that also gets approved at town meeting because it's something that would really benefit definitely the youth community, but it can also benefit the older community also. Because you could also have older, you know, you can have softball leagues playing there now, which we don't have. We don't have any adult softball leagues in town. Other towns do that, but we don't have that just because again of the, um, we don't have a scoreboard. But I can have Rick answer any questions that you have because he's right here in the living room.
Nice.
And he's on the baseball board, so.
Well, I see Scott Schultz has his hand up.
Oh, great. All right, Scott, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, he's, someone may answer a little bit of the question, but just want to get a better idea of how this really, you know, helps a lot of the, more of the general public because this seems to have a very narrow constituency for this particular project, considering for the recreation side. And you're looking for $20,000 and it's interesting that there's an extra 20,000 being asked from free cash to complete the basketball tennis courts, which definitely seems to have a much better, you know, open to the general public and probably better utilized than what this would seem to be, especially, you know, you're asking for 20,000, that seems to be equivalent to the 20,000 from, uh, free cash to complete the basketball that maybe this is something that could be looked at as a future item after more general public items are covered by recreation.
Well, the money's there for everybody to be utilizing and people just don't know about it. And everything always kind of gets pushed off to the future for the youth in this town, it feels like. So I'm just trying to do my part and pick up some of those lost pieces.
Yeah, I'm just looking, I mean, it says it happens to be matching to 20,000 from to the equivalent 20,000 being asked from free cash for the basketball. And so it almost looks like it's trying to be squeezed in at same, at this time as opposed to, uh, just completing the, uh, basketball and tennis courts with, uh, not having to step into the free cash money.
Yeah, I don't know much about the free cash money. I, all I know is like, we're trying to, you know, establish a, a well-rounded program and trying to get more people involved in the town, more of the youth involved in the town and inside of a, you know, a sport that hasn't had much attention to it in quite some time with, I mean, this town is really only about like two or three sports and, you know, the youth like, like these sports. So like, if we can get more people interested, then it makes things a little bit better. So, you know, I really want the, the youth to be able to be observed by, you know, the elderly community around. I want the park to be observed by everybody in the area. So, you know, I'm just trying to put together a solid, solid position. So people will actually just be able to, you know, be proud of what they're, what they're playing on, the kids are and you know, be able to bring their parents, grandparents, everybody to the game and stuff to let them see such a beautiful park, which it, that whole area is beautiful. We just need to enhance it a little bit. And it hasn't been upgraded in quite some time.
And also Scott, I think that, um, it's important to remember that community preservation too doesn't have to meet. The goals don't have to meet every individual group in town. For instance, the Historic Society with the foundation of the historic building, you know, I would certainly endorse. I'm not necessarily going to use it. My kids aren't necessarily going to use it, but I know there's a benefit there for the community, right? So I see what you're saying. Will older people use this? No, but would they maybe see their grandchild's game? Probably, potentially. You know what I mean?
Well, I guess, I mean, I think people will still show up at the games without this. I mean, I don't think that's a, uh, and I'm not sure understanding how that's, uh, you know, people aren't going to show up and watch a game because there is no scoreboard or booth.
Well, the point is there won't be a game there, Scott. That's the point.
You're saying, for a playoff game.
No, that's incorrect. We have, um, and the baseball program can speak to this more. When they, um, build their, um, schedules, so many games get played in so many towns, right? If you don't have the better, more desirable things, scoreboard, announcement booth, then you get sort of pushed to the end. Right? So will grandparents watch the game? If there is no game being held there, no, they won't. They'll be going to another town to watch that game. So by, you know, building up this field, you know, it, it will certainly serve the youth mostly, definitely.
How many games potentially would increase the number to the town?
They at least double because last year's schedule and that was made, that was, we had eight actual home games at that point and Boylston had 16, Westboylston had 20. And then by the playoff time where, I mean, that's just in, in the majors division. I'm not even talking the minors division on games there. So, yeah, it would probably double to triple it just because of, you know, they're just getting all the ballpark space. Nobody wants to come to our park because, uh, we don't have a scoreboard. And, um, you know, and the announcement booth is a huge play for the kids. They love the music being played. They love them. Oh, it's just, it's an overall better experience in those other towns, unfortunately. You know, we have the best grounds by far. We got the playground. We have the wide open space. We have the most parking. We have, you know, nice new grandstands that we, you know, spend the last of our money on, just so people can start to visit there more. So I, I love our facility the best by far. And I think a lot of the other parents do, but we just don't get the game time there.
And I think it's, I think we just have to really keep in mind too with CPA money. If we start looking at it in terms of, is this going to benefit every population in town? I mean, we want to certainly try to speak to all the populations, but if you can make that work somehow, I, I, I think that, that's great, right? But if you can't necessarily do that, you know, evenly across the board, it doesn't mean I don't think we should, you know, uh, not support the project because it doesn't evenly represent all different groups in town. Do you know what I'm saying, Scott?
Well, yeah, I've never seen, I know every project is not going to, um, get everybody. I've just, like they say, it's, uh, no, you're asking for the 20,000 for free cash for the, complete the basketball stuff. And it just seemed to me that the, the 20,000 for this should be just utilized, complete that and look at this when you do have the CPA funds in the future. So that, that's my, my comment. We can move on next.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something and, you know, take, take the line off of my name. You know, I'm not selectmen peg, I'm just regular peg. Um, you know, I agree with Julie and Rick. For far too long, I think the kids in town have been shortchanged and the rec committee has been shortchanged. I think it would be a great benefit to the town. I mean, think back to the Easter egg hunt that we had a year, you know, a couple of years ago. We weren't expecting a lot of kids and then all of a sudden that entire area filled, you know, it brings a sense to me, it brought a sense of pride back to the town, you know, for people wanting to come out, you know, and wanting to, to be there and have a place to gather to do so. And you know what? Yeah, Julie, I agree with you, you know, to have a little kid get up there and hear that is now number four, you know, and their name, it just gives them something. So, you know, I'll stop there on my bandwagon, but, um, yeah. I'm pretty sure people kind of know where I stand on this one as regular peg, not selectmen peg. Any other questions, comments? All right. Elise, I think you are good to go. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all so much. We appreciate it. Have a great night.
Thanks, Julie.
Take care.
All right. So Margaret is the last one, you, can you take that one? The special purpose stabilization fund.
You're muted.
You're on mute.
Okay. Yes, I, I would ask for Anna and June to come up as well. Because this has been discussed, uh, Anna, this is the Public Safety Special Stabilization Fund. So as the warrant article explains, this, wait a minute. Okay, this article seeks to establish and pre-fund, it's keyword, pre-fund, a special stabilization fund for public safety operational and capital costs. By retrieving any money or, or spending any money out of this special stabilization fund would require a town meeting vote. Establishing the special stabilization fund requires a two-thirds vote of town meeting. The reason this is being requested, there are a couple of different reasons. First of all, the town has historically received Highland Commons Public Safety Mitigation Funds shortly before town meeting. So it's gone through the budget planning process and the warrant preparation process without having funds in hand. The Capital Planning Committee last year worked really hard to assure that not all of the public safety mitigation funds would be spent out. This is going to be a mechanism to pre-fund this special purpose stabilization fund with, I can give you the exact number, it's 336,449 dollars and 72 cents to be able to strategically spend on, on public safety costs from this fund. This is going to begin preventing the town from planning expenditure of funds before those funds are in hand. It's going to put the funds in the appropriate place. This was also a recommendation that the town received back in 2012 from DLS to establish such a fund. Um, and I think it, based on best practice, this is, um, this is an appropriate course. Uh, finally, this, this is going to allow the Special Stabilization Fund to automatically have the Highland Commons mitigation funds and any other mitigation funds directly deposited to the stabilization fund without additional appropriation. Again, pulling money from the fund will require a town meeting vote in all cases. June, Anna, I hope I've done that justice.
Either Anna's frozen or she's sitting very. June, anything from your side?
No, that pretty much summed it all up. It's just an easier way to account for it actually, if it was set up. In the stabilization fund area. So it'd just be a direct into that account. And we voted pretty much the same way we already do.
One thing that we will need to keep in mind, just recently, we started using a small portion of the Public Safety Mitigation Funds to fund our operating budget. So to spend money from stabilization will require a two-thirds vote under that operating budget article or motion. Any questions? That wraps it up?
Start with some, we started with some bylaw cleanups. We ended with the stabilizations, you know, we put all that, we sandwiched in the middle, all the really exciting stuff. So.
Awesome.
Are you saying we've ended on a boring note?
Never. Never.
No, but it was, all the information was great, I thought.
And. Right. Big thank yous to all the groups that came out to, um, you know, talk about their articles, um, you know, especially, I appreciate that. All right. Uh, well, we have anybody? Are there any other general questions now that we've kind of gone through the warrant, you know, what's on your mind? What's keeping you up at night that we can have a chat about, not deliberate on, not vote on, but, um, pick your brain and see what's up. Oh, Anna's back.
Hi again. So as a, as a resident of Berlin on Highland Street. We worked really hard about slowing those dump trucks down, the dirt, dirt moving vehicles. Um, cause they're not just dump trucks. Um, and about, I don't know, a month or six weeks ago, they started speeding again, all of them repeatedly. And I was just wondering if there was anything we could do to, you know, lessen some of the danger on our roads.
I, I'm just going to speak for the traffic safety advisory committee. Um, we do have a couple of stop sign requests that we'll be considering in November. Uh, to bring to the board for, uh, further consideration and action. I don't know if that's going to help completely. Uh, but, uh, we also have received the mobile LED speed signs, um, that we'll work with, uh, the police department on to put up in that area to try to remind drivers, uh, to, uh, slow down.
And, and, and just the, the select board members themselves were relatively quiet, not because we might not have something to say, but, but the open meeting laws doesn't allow us to discuss things, uh, that weren't formally posted. And although one of us could comment, uh, the rest couldn't because then there would be a majority of the select board discussing something. And so we've been holding up, we, 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 I'm trying to make sure I don't cross any lines. This is why we have.
So it's my job to read minds.
Margaret is a, that's right. She is a sacrificial lamb when it comes to these.
We will, we will do our best.
I know. I appreciate that. And I really just wanted to make you guys aware that, um, whatever previous agreements we had had with those construction vehicles have become null and void according to their behaviors.
Can I just add that I, there are two, um, construction sites up Highland Street? And so, you know, they could, may not be just from the one site. It could be from the both of them. I don't know if everybody has the same information. Um, that might be part of the problem.
It's, it's definitely been labeled vehicles with previous agreements as well as unlabeled vehicles. Um, so it's, it's pretty much everybody.
Okay.
Thank you, Anna. We appreciate that.
Thanks.
Thank you for the comments.
Anybody, anybody else? Questions on your mind, keeping you up at night?
Or is it bedtime?
My tea's gone. So, you know, just saying.
Too.
And it's a big one. I will. On November, on November 8th, um, I, I do expect that we're, there are going to be, um, face coverings, uh, required. Unless there's plenty, plenty of room. I'm, I'm checking with the school principal, um, to see what his rules are, but it would not surprise me. If they, um, if they will expect us to wear, um, face coverings as well. So we'll be sure to have a supply of those there. And people can bring their own.
Right. No, along with cleaning equipments, Margaret, you know, people come up, they talk to them like, you know, that type of thing.
I would assume they probably, their rules are to wear a mask, having been to the regional school committee meeting the other night. Everybody had a mask on.
Better to be safe than sorry. We will not have town meeting, um, handouts in bags, uh, this time. But, uh, there'll be minimal handouts. So just the motion sheets.
And Barry had.
And Barry's items.
Oh, and Barry's items. Yes.
Okay. And we're going to use, Margaret, are we using the, the clickers?
The clickers. Yes. James Wheeler has been working on setting up the system for town meetings. So that should be good to go.
Good. Good. I think that went really well on our last one. It helped, uh, speed the vote. All right. Well, I'm not seeing anything else. So I think we can all bid you adieu. Appreciate you. Oh, look at Mary. She's giving us the hurry up sign.
Thanks everyone for showing up. It was really great.
We appreciate you, you know, definitely reach out to us if there's something else on your mind that you think of later. And have a good night. Oh, roll, oh, roll call.
Need a roll call to, uh.
Yep.
Second.
Stone eye.
Hawkins eye.
Bye.
We are good. Thank you, Mary. Appreciate your reminder.